Trustee Dodge?
Here.
Trustee Calandrello?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Trustee Malani?
Here.
Mayor Pico?
Here.
Please rise for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of November 2nd, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' Meeting of November 2nd, 2020.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call or roll.
Trustee Fenton?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Sorry.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Community Pride Award?
I guess I don't get any legislative text. So tonight, we want to honor a young man with a Community Pride Award, Carter Schott, who's here tonight. I'm going to read this and I'm going to come down and present the award to him. So both myself and the Village Board would like to present a Community Pride Award to Carter Schott, senior at Carl Sandberg High School, in recognition of winning the National Federation of State High School Association's Heart of the Arts Award. Carter competed with five other states and received this honor for his dedication to the marching band. He has risen above his physical challenges of living with a muscular condition called spinal muscular dystrophy by learning to play his drum while still performing choreography in unison with the rest of the bandmates. Carter's love of music and marching has led him to participate in over eight student activities at Sandberg, including the marching band, the pep band, the jazz band, and Spring Musical. He is also involved in competitive bass fishing and robotic teams. He is an active member in the Orland Park community who has dedicated much of his time to helping others. He has completed a whopping 300, over 350 hours of community service, running exercise classes for seniors, and an assisted living facility. The quote Carter frequently uses is, "If you can't stand up, stand out." He is an inspiration to all, reminding us to believe in yourself, follow your passions, and you can do anything you set your mind to. Carter, well done. Carter, thank you very much. You're an inspiration to all of us and to all of your classmates, I am sure.
Accounts payable from November 3rd, 2020 to November 16th, 2020?
Mr. President?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the accounts payable from November 3rd, 2020, to November 16th, 2020, in the amount of $2,694,470.21.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call or roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for October 30th, 2020, approval. Item B, Volkswagen of Orland Park Ordinance Granting Special Use Permit Amendment. Item C, Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement for 2020 Volume Cap Transfer Resolution. I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through C of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Call or roll.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Moran Family Brands Inducement Agreement?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the sales tax sharing inducement agreement with Moran Family Brands as outlined above and be incorporated into their final development agreement pending approval of the zoning special use and building permits. So moved. Second. And Alex, you want to give a little background on this? Okay. Welcome.
Hello. So Moran Family-
You can take your mask off to speak in the mic so that we hear.
Thank you. So Moran Family Brands were a franchisor in automotive concepts from oil changes, transmission repairs, to window tinting. We have six different brands all throughout the country, and this would be our headquarters where we were founded in 1990 by my grandfather and mother. And we have about, between, from time to time, 16 to 30 people come in, in and out of the business. It just depends on, especially with COVID, just depends on how social distancing.
Thank you very much.
So I'm Pete Baldine. I'm the president of the company, and just wanted to say we're very excited about moving to Orland Park. We've been at Midlothian for 30 years, and our owner and CEO is from Orland Park, as are some of our other employees. Couple of key things I just want to point out. We, our franchisees, we have a great culture, and are, as evidenced by the fact that 33% of our franchisees have been in our system for 20 years or more, and 16% of them have been in for 30 years or more. So that means they've renewed their license agreements, you know, multiple times, which is one of the things I'm probably most proud of. We have a lot of good new growth going on as well. Recently, we opened up in Columbus, Ohio in September. We opened up near Philadelphia in October, and in the next, or the remaining part of the year, we'll open up four other new locations. Last week, we sold an eight-store development agreement in South Florida for our TurboTint concept, and also a three-store development agreement in Orlando. So we've got a lot going on, and we're excited about moving into a nicer, new headquarters in Orland Park.
Great, well, we're happy to have you.
Well, thanks for having us.
Any questions or comments from the board on this?
Just welcome to Orland Park.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And just briefly before I call the roll, just let you know that this incentive agreement is the non-traditional sales tax user going into an industrial space, and because my understanding is you sell equipment to your franchisees, and so that would come out of your sights. So this is a win-win for Orland Park and for you, and we're really happy to have you and happy we could bring you on board and bring you to Orland Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call or roll?
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Vote Amendment, Temporary Food Service Establishment Permit Duration, Olivo Tacos?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Kevin, ordinance number, please.
5557.
I move to approve ordinance number 5557, an ordinance amending Title VI, Chapter I, Health Code, and Title VII, Chapter III, Regulations for Specified Businesses of the Orland Park Village Code, and a move to approve Olivo Tacos Temporary Food Service Establishments Permit Duration Extension to January 17th, 2021, which coincides with the end of the Outdoor Skating Rink Special Event at Lakeview Plaza, pending Olivo Tacos provides a complete permit application to the village for their new restaurant space in Orland Park by Friday, December 11th, 2020.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Resolution Determining the 2020 Tax Levy in Compliance with the Truth in Taxation Law?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Resolution number, please?
2051.
I move to pass Resolution Number 2051 entitled Resolution Determining the 2020 Tax Levy in Compliance with the Truth in Taxation Law.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Calandrello?
Just a quick question. So we're just going to publish this because my question is that we talked about maybe having some more business incentives, and all trustee Cindy and I talked about some relief for our businesses. If we say pass this, and then maybe we have 100, just on our numbers, a certain amount of money, then we're probably not going to lower our taxes by that much money. So we're not going to lock in the levy at this point, correct?
It can't be any higher than this.
Cannot be any higher than this, right.
And as far as the discussion with trustee Katsinas, that's on the next committee of the whole, as George sent out in the Village Board briefing.
I know, and we put my idea also on there, and you told me, so I just wasn't wondering. So now if, say we want to use, I think it's, what is it, 1%, which is $6 per household, it's 130-ish, that money will not be able to get that back if we decide to help our businesses, or if we want to use that 130 for another project, that's gone.
So yeah, after tonight, this is the maximum levy that the board will be able to approve, the tax levy. So there are, obviously, there's other sources of revenue, but as far as property tax is concerned, this would be the maximum. You can lower it even further when the tax hearing, tax levy is approved, but it can't go higher than this after tonight.
And does it have to be passed today, or can we wait, because we still have about a month and a half left until the first of the year?
I don't think, because there are procedural steps that have to go 20 days. The tax levy determination has to occur 20 days before the tax levy ordinance is approved. This is the second meeting of November.
We'd have to call a special meeting.
Have to call a special meeting. Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
So just to play that back, George, confirming what you just said, that if we publish at 13,293, we can't go higher than that, correct?
That's correct.
But if we published at 13,425, we could indeed, over the course of the next couple of meetings, decide we really do want to have some property tax relief, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mayor Pico, I'd like to bring up an idea, and then I'll offer an amendment. I think we should publish, so my question for you is, prefer the amendment and discuss that, or just share the idea?
If you want to amend the motion, feel free to amend the motion.
All right, then I'll bring up the points while in a second. Move to amend the motion so that the levy is published at 13,425,518, which holds it flat from prior years.
Second.
Any comments on the amendment?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
My first comment in support of the amendment is levies are part of the budgets. Budgets are part of a plan, and they're a statement of priorities, and there's a lot in this budget that I would agree with, as with every budget, there's, you know, don't necessarily agree with everything, but I think it's fairly sound. And I guess my question is, as a matter of policy, this is $137,000 on a levy of 13 and a half, roughly, total budget expenditures of 170 million. I'd prefer to keep it flat, and then specifically over the next couple of weeks, decide, do we want to put that into additional road projects, perhaps do another park? There's a bike pass that we've envisioned in the future, or a simple project like the banners at a discount instead of trying to cover all of our costs, maybe we could use this to absorb it. So again, keep it flat, and I have a specific question for staff. So Kevin, around numbers, at our cost of money, $137,000 gets you about $2.5 million worth of bonds?
Approximately that, yeah.
Right, so again, to the board, I would say, that, since we're taking debt to do infrastructure improvements, which is a commitment we've made to our residents on roads and parks, this allows us to do more, and I think for a number of people, it's, you know, $2, do another road, do another park, put it to something useful.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
I just want to get clarification on something, and that's one of the reasons I second that. Is it, am I correct that each household will get $6 relief?
So it all really depends on what happens to the EAV. But what we have here in the staff report is that if the EAV remains the same, the village's portion of homeowners' tax bill, and that's for a $300,000 home, will decrease $17.54 annual, if we reduce it to 1%, like we're suggesting. If the property tax assessment equals the overall increase in the village's EAV, or by 1.05%, then they'll pay $9.62 less. So it's somewhere between $9.62 less and $17.54 less.
Per household?
Per household.
So instead of-
For $300,000.
Right, and I understand that's for, you know, we're considering the relief for people who are having difficult times at this point. But at the cost of $9 or $16 per household, we could possibly build a park, or we could take the money and borrow and get road improvement money, and expand our road improvement program?
It's a policy decision for the board to determine that. But what staff was doing was following board's direction a few months earlier, where the board directed staff to reduce the property tax levy for this property tax, and then that's what we did.
Right, and I think the residents were thinking they were going to get like $100 and some dollars relief or something like that. Just, I just wanted to get a quick clarification on how much money we're talking about per household versus doing a park or doing more roads at our borrowing rate. So that was one of my concerns.
But this, just to keep, just in perspective, the village's portion of a tax bill is small to begin with.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Healy?
If we, yeah, I respect the thing to keep the levy the same at 13,425, but if we, that 137 is symbolic in a couple ways to me. For one, it just shows that if we tax them, we'll just spend it, which is, you know, why don't we, we can get by with spending less money. And these parks and program and the streets are viewed in the long term, and with the budget that we've prepared, we're, it sounds like we're addressing those issues. But probably the overarching thing is that in a dark time like this year has been, I think it's remarkable that a village can lower their taxes. And this is something that is, should be, inspire confidence in the community, and give a little optimism that not everything is, that there is room for things to go in the right direction. There is a need to demonstrate that we are acting in the interests of our fellow village residents, and I don't know one resident that would not vote for lower, well, maybe there's a couple, but not to vote for lowering our taxes. It's something that I receive comments on every day. So I think if every village in the country could follow our example and start lowering taxes, I looked and saw that the library levy seems to be about the same, and the school, we got to lower taxes. So why not start with a small bit, and maybe we can keep that ball rolling in that direction to keep it smaller and smaller and smaller? And I think it may restore some confidence that the government is listening to the residents.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
Just to clarify something you said, so you were under board direction to find the best way possible to lower the tax levy?
Yep. A few months ago, the board passed a resolution urging the staff to reduce the property tax levy.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Calandrello?
George, so if we do pass this amendment, we can still lower the taxes and keep it at what we discussed previously. This just gives us the option for a month to figure out, maybe if Cindy's idea has some legs, needs some funding, or gets more parks done, at least gives us a month window to figure out a little more detail. So at the end of the day, we're not closing the door to some of the tax reliefs that's spoken here, and $9, $17 per person, or per household, I understand, and, you know, and this could be a token that we're providing lower taxes. But this is not saying we're gonna use that money, it's just giving us the option to. So I'm not even, I'm not sure why this would be a bad thing at this time, just, I always was told, options are good. So that's why I support this. I mean, if we, maybe we could get, what roads get done, or we can do more projects. I'm always a big proponent of getting more parks done. Or maybe there's some business help we can do, especially since it looks like for the next six months, we might have some issues with COVID coming back. I just think this, all this member does is give us options, keeping doors open, but not closing them at the same time. So I'm not sure why people would vote against this, so that's where I stand. But at the end of the day, we're just keeping the options open, correct, George, if we vote for this amendment?
Yeah, ultimately, so today is the determination. It's the max that you'll be able to levy, and then when the tax levy comes before the board for the ordinance approval, that the actual levy will be approved at that time, but it cannot be more than what today's determination sets.
Correct. So we set the max today, in a month now, when we pass the budget, it could be lower than this. So all this is doing is give us an option to keep it flat. Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
It's been a healthy discussion. It's a pretty simple choice. You know, again, my amendment was simply to keep the tax levy flat, and as a board going forward, figure out what we want to do with those resources on behalf of the people of Orland Park. Send them back the effective equivalent of $2 a person, because I'm pretty sure that we have 60,000 people, round numbers, divided into $137,000. You know, we don't control the EVA, we don't control all the machinations that the county and the state go through with equalizers and adjustments and et cetera. The one number, the one number in this entire system that is fixed, is we vote to cap the maximum we are asking for. How we spend it, how we give it back, how we reduce it, how we do more roads, subsidize a banner, do more advertising for our businesses, that'll be up to us going forward. And for my chair, and again, it's just a simple policy question, I think there's effective ways we can use those resources in what could be a challenging 2021. And I sincerely hope that all the vaccines work, things get back to normal, and quite frankly, I would love to see us have additional spending in advertising to bring shoppers and visitors to Orland Park as soon as it is safe and possible. And this could be an interesting way to get demand back up for our businesses. So, you know, it is what it is. It's a simple idea, keep the levy flat. I think the people of Orland Park would trust this board in a deliberative fashion to figure out an appropriate and suitable way to spend it on their behalf. Thank you.
Any other comments? So before voting on the amendment, so I do not support the amendment. I think we need to hold our feet to the fire and provide some relief to taxpayers. $17 a household, if the 10 taxing bodies or nine taxing bodies did that, that's $153 a household. It starts to add up. Yeah, we're only 6.7% of the property tax, but that's not a reason to not reduce the taxes and hold our feet to the fire. We can do the other budget stuff that we talked about, you know, the talks about parks and roads. If I'm not mistaken, we were fixing one park every two years for the decade before this. We've gotten into, I think, what, seven last year, plus pavilions because of the additional spending we've done, as well as John Humphrey Complex. We've done the same thing with roads and put that, and basically, we've told them, whatever you can swallow in a year that makes sense, where we don't put ourselves aboard in 15 years in the same position where they're way behind on roads. So we've done all that. So it's time for us to give something back to residents, to landowners, you know, property owners that aren't really seeing any relief. It's a small amount, but if other taxing bodies do that, so that's why I won't be supporting the amendment. So please call a roll on the amendment to keep the levy flat.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Nope.
Mayor Pico?
Nope.
So that brings us to the original motion. Anybody have any more comments? Mr. Chairman? Who's that?
Trustee Dodge.
Trustee Dodge, can't-
You know, this is, I get it, fair airing of an idea. It didn't carry. This is something that we have to do, although I obviously think that there's another way to do it. Thank you.
Any other comments? So my final comment on the property tax, it's great that we can find a way to lower the property tax levy. I do encourage other taxing bodies to do the same. Unlike us, they haven't really seen the revenue hit that we have, so, and they were closed for quite a while as well, except for maybe the Fire Protection District, who didn't see revenue hit, but it was open. So they should be able to find a way to give property owners some tax relief. And I do also want to point out to the crowd that, you know, this is, you know, we're making a good faith effort to keep these property taxes low, keep them down, lower them, which is good. We're going to continue to hammer Springfield, because this year alone, our police pension contribution went from 3.9 to 4.6 million. So we'd be able to lower it another .7 million if we didn't have to handle those police pensions through our property tax. So pensions are really what's driving your property taxes, and that's for everybody that's driving that. So keep that in mind. So the state of Illinois must address public sector pensions. If they don't, none of the rest of this is going to matter, because it's going to crowd out spending on everything else for every town, even the ones in fiscal positions like we are. Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Authorizing Intervention in All 2020 to 2022 Tax Year Appeals Before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board.
Resolution number?
2052.
I'll entertain a motion to pass Resolution Number 2052 entitled Resolution Authorizing Intervention in All 2020 to 2022 Tax Year Appeals Before the State of Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board. So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Employee Health Insurance Renewal, FY 2021?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I move to authorize the village manager to execute employee health insurance renewal agreements with the recommended carriers and vendors and associated expenses effective January 1, 2021.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Call or roll?
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. And I do want to thank staff. I know that the first quote on this came in pretty high, and I know you guys worked really, really hard to get this down to less than a 1% increase, so great job working on that. And also, Mike from Horton, thank you for working hard on that to get those carriers down to where they got to. Non-scheduled citizens and visitors, do we have any here tonight? Board comments? Trustee Fenton?
First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to welcome home Marine James Jankowski, who came home Saturday, and I'd like to thank him for his service, for his tour of service in Iraq and in Afghanistan, and he's home for good. So I just, there was a nice parade for him on Sunday morning, and it's wonderful to
and it's wonderful to have him home, safe and sound. And just wanted to publicly thank him for his service in the Marine Corps. I'd also like to, since there were some snarky remarks made, an idea that we had, that I came up with quite several years ago, and we implemented it, was the house decorating contest for the holidays, for the Christmas season. And back then, and I've already spoken to Ray this evening, we had, American Sales was our sponsor. And the first prize was a tree, a Christmas tree, an artificial tree. And second place was a wreath. So I know we're doing that again. I saw it in board briefings last week that they're going to do in the contest again. And I spoke to him about possibly reaching out to American Sales if they wanted to sponsor it, even if it was a wreath or not, or maybe next year under the circumstances. But I do know people are out buying Christmas decorations and putting them up in a hurry. So, you know, it was an idea that we had it, it ran for several years. And then for whatever reason, it just stopped. And I'm glad that we're bringing it back because it's a great event and it gets the community involved in decorating. And who doesn't like seeing Christmas decorations? I'd also like to remind everybody that as another tradition, the Orland Park Lions Club will start, their tree lot will be set up this week. Tree sales start Sunday, the 22nd, and it will run till all the trees are gone. And the tree lot will be open every day of the week. During the week, it's open from 4:30 to 8, I believe. And on the weekends, we have longer hours. So everybody wants to come out and get a tree. You will be required to wear a mask to get onto the tree lot. Plus, it also provides the opportunity for the high school kids, and this year also the 7th and 8th graders from St. Mike to get their community service hours in, helping the Lions Club sell their trees. I'd also like to wish everyone a very happy, safe, and healthy Thanksgiving. Remember, social distancing. I know I've said this before, but several individuals that I know that are close, not that they were in my bubble, but they were hit very hard with COVID. And I know people think that, you know, it's just whatever. And one individual, in fact, his business is in town. It's not his business, but he works in town. And unfortunately, his whole family was affected with it. This is a person super healthy, one of those energetic that goes to the gym every day. And unfortunately, after he thought everything was fine, he ended up back in the hospital and now has an underlying condition from this. And other people that I know, you know, same situation. Some people, it doesn't affect them, some people it does. And when you can just do something to be considerate of others by wearing a mask, it's just thoughtful and it shows that you're being considerate of other people just by wearing a face covering, that's all. We're not asking you to donate thousands of dollars to a cause or, or anything like that. So I just hope everybody has a very safe and healthy Thanksgiving. And then just one other clarification, I've been on the fence about mentioning this, but at the board meeting two weeks ago, this is for clarification for the residents, so they don't misunderstand some things that have been said. And one of it was that all the elected officials are no longer pension eligible. And just for clarification, that's a, that statement is only partially true. The clerk's position and the trustees' positions are no longer pension eligible, but the mayor's position, no matter who sits in that chair, that position still is pension eligible. And one of the things I think the legal team and staff should bring that resolution back to the board to give them the opportunity to make it. So the people who did make that statement, it would be a true statement then and for clarification, so the residents aren't confused. Because I've had a lot of residents ask me, hey, you know, what's going on here? I thought, you know, everybody didn't have this pension, wasn't eligible. And, you know, it just isn't, that's not true. So just for clarification, make everything, and like I said, it doesn't matter who sits in that chair or any of these chairs. So, you know, when you make a statement, you have to make sure that what you're saying is accurate, especially when it's affecting the residents and decisions they may have or may not have down the line. So I just wanted to get that clarification out there, and if possible, to get that back on. I know if we asked to have something on the agenda, we don't get to make that decision. But if it could come back, I don't know if it has to go to committee, the whole, or if the mayor makes a decision, or if the village manager makes a decision. But have a safe and healthy Thanksgiving.
Trustee Dodge.
I think my comments will be shorter than Trustee Fenton's.
Sorry.
It, I would, it's my favorite time of year in, in Orland. And looking forward to, as we get into the holiday season and we start to light up the town, Orland Park looks, looks great. And it's in, it's in many ways in great financial shape. And it looks great for, from years' worth of solid decision-making. And, you know, it's, it'll be kind of nice not to, when I first moved out to Orland, you know, you often found a way through town, never going near La Grange Road from November through December or ever on a weekend. And I think that, you know, we're in much better shape given that we've got a great centerpiece road to our town. Let's hope that the American economy really does start to heal as we get through this pandemic. There's a number released by the Department of Commerce the other day that said now fully 20% of all the money spent in America on retail is now going through e-commerce. So there are some long-range things that future boards certainly need to, to think about. And just as I kind of look broadly at everything going on in our country and our community, you know, the information, the data, the science is there. I think there's generally a central set of facts. What always varies are people's interpretation and usage of those facts. But I was disappointed recently to see the number of elected officials across the country effectively trying to advocate for canceling Thanksgiving. That strikes me as a really bad idea. And I guess what I would say to all the people in Orland Park is, you know, the information's there, be careful. As Kathy alluded to, this thing can be COVID. When it hits people, that I've known, it can turn out to be a nothing burger, or it can be deadly serious. So let's all be careful. I'd like to encourage everybody to be thoughtful. And there's lots of different ways we can all show being thoughtful. And quite frankly, as we head into Thanksgiving, let's do just that. Let's be, let's be grateful, and let's give thanks. Thank you.
Trustee Calendula.
Just a couple of things. First of all, I just want to say, I think we had a pretty good conversation about the budget. Like I said, the reason why I voted that way was to get more options. So maybe we would have used that fund for roads or parks or business development or business help. That's all I wanted to get more options, we had a month to do. But some things I want, as I see Carter here, I just want to say, we're so very proud of you. As a fellow drumade, or drum line in high school, I just, it shows you that there's good in this world. So I just, as I see you there, I had to say something additional. So I just, you're a pride of Orland Park, and you're one of the jewels. So thank you for coming out and, and doing what you do. So that's great. So, I'm sorry, I don't usually do that, but you just hit me. It's, it's great. So I just wanted, again, everyone, I wish everyone a healthy and safe Thanksgiving. But more importantly, let's remember a couple of things. When people go shopping, when people go in park, our police force are out there protecting us. So remember that, thank your police officers when you see them. They're all, it's overtime from Thanksgiving to New Year's. So I want to just say, good luck. Hopefully, it's smooth, and hopefully, they could spend some time with their family now because it's going to be limited after that. And of course, please shop smart, using CDC guidelines. And also, I want to thank our village team for making Orland Park as beautiful as it is with all the Christmas decorations and how, I think, a couple, before my time, we talked about the experience economy. You can go anywhere, go shopping, but it's the experience that we try to push, and that's why we do what we do. So thank you, and have a good Thanksgiving.
Trustee Healy.
Just trying to think about, as you get old as I am, you start thinking about going back and looking at what happened in grammar school and all that. I try to remember, there was an example one time of what separates animals from people. And it was the use of, is that people have an intellect and a free will. And when it comes to wearing masks and that, you have to, you have the free will to make a decision. You have the intellect to say, I'd rather social distance than wear a mask. And believe it or not, I do wear masks sometimes when you can't, I can't social distance. And, but it's, it's very little. I think it's a right that we have that I just refuse to go along with the, the, the social police of, you know, forcing you to wear a mask. We have our rights disappearing from us every day. And I hope we can just respect people who like to have a differing opinion than our own. We want to respect people who have the will to exercise that freedom. And they can choose differently from you, and that, that's fine. So we don't, we should respect their ability to make that decision and their intellect to make that a good decision. I hope that on Thanksgiving, we can all be thankful for the rights we still have left. There may not be as many rights down the road. Thank you.
Trustee Katsinis.
I'd also like to piggyback on Dan's statement. Thank you, Carter. You represent Sandberg very well. I'm a former band mom, so I know all the events your parents have been to. And you're just such a great role model, and I hope you get the Eagle Award at the end of the year. Pensions, as we all know, are crippling the state of Illinois. The state is shifting the burden back to the local governments. I think it was imperative when three new trustees got elected that we did away with the pensions for that very reason, to set an example. You serve in this role as a public servant, not to line your own pockets. So I'm grateful for the fellow trustees that we voted to do away with pensions for local elective people on a part-time job that takes away from our hardworking men and women who earn a pension. So also, I wanted to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and be safe, and remember to shop local. Thank you.
Trustee Malani.
First, I want to, I want to congratulate and thank Carter Shott as well. You know, I've known Carter for many years now. And, you know, he, along with his entire family, are really a true example of what dedication, determination, and strength are all about. You guys are amazing, and everything you do for the community is, is amazing. So we appreciate that. Thank you. It's also nice to see, you know, businesses like Volkswagen of Orland Park expanding their business during this time. Got a chance to visit the Stand Donuts truck this week, weekend. They will be opening sometime in December, so it was a really good turnout there. All the proceeds went to the Bridge Teen Center. So, you know, it was all there for a good cause, and we look forward to them coming to Orland Park. Also looking forward to the Moran family of Brands, who were here earlier. If you think of Mylex and Multi-State Transmissions, those are the types of companies they, they deal with. And, you know, having them come to Orland Park is really going to help us diversify the types of business we have in our area. So it's not just retail, it's not just restaurants. We're bringing some other types of business here. And also, tonight, for the first time in several years, we've agreed to lower our tax levy. So great things here tonight. Also like to remind everybody that the Turkey Trot is being held on November 22nd. I'm not much of a runner, so you're not going to see me out there attempting it. But also, the Holiday Festival and the tree lighting will be out there on November 29th as well. So we hope to see you there. Everybody have a safe and happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Malani. So Trustee Fenton went into pension eligibility. And as she well knows, that to declare someone pension ineligible, you have to say, you have to certify they work less than 1,000 hours a year, which is obviously part-time. And as she also knows, herself and five other board members voted to make the position full-time, which it is the mayor's position full-time until the end of this term. So therefore, the mayor's position becomes pension ineligible for the next term. So she's also aware that I have not taken the pension. So I think that fully explains what Kathy Fenton was trying to get to. Also, I'd like to point out that from as far back as I can see, we lowered the property tax levy today. And it's a small amount, but if everyone does that small amount, it'll amount to something. And we're only one of many taxing bodies. So we're going to continue to lead by example. So great job for Orland Park tonight. Also, want to welcome Moran Brands. You know, I think it's, from what I was told, 50 to 60 jobs and possibly more later. And then also 50 to 60 visitors in town every year, as she said, what's that?
Every month.
Or every month, I'm sorry. And that's, that brings hotel stays and restaurants and all of that. So that's great, not to mention the, the sales tax revenue and all of that. So again, diversifying our economy, which is great. Carter, you represent everything that's great about the village of Orland Park. Commend you for all that you've done. Thank you. I want to remind everyone to shop Orland with Thanksgiving coming and Black Friday and all of that. Shop Orland, be safe. The Holiday Festival, like, like Trustee Malani said, and the Turkey Trot are coming up. Turkey Trot this Sunday and the Holiday Festival the following Sunday. And then regarding Thanksgiving, for those of you who didn't see the PSA that was cut, you know, one of the things I mentioned was Thanksgiving. And I agree with Trustee Dodge, the idea of canceling Thanksgiving is, you know, is nuts. And then, you know, to ask people to quarantine 14 days before Thanksgiving is also not very realistic. That's somebody who just flat out doesn't understand how people live. Most people can't take 14 days off of work so that they can go to Thanksgiving. They have bills to pay and mortgages to pay. So, so what's realistic? I'm not going to say it's realistic to say, go to your family and everybody mask up and, because people aren't going to do it. Okay? But here's what's realistic. Use some common sense, okay? And if you're older and immunocompromised, protect yourself. Instead of a cloth mask, get an N95 mask and protect yourself. And if, if you're, but the one thing I would say, if you're going to a family event, if you are at all sick with anything, just stay home that day and don't get your loved one sick. That's probably the most important thing that you can do. That's just a common sense thing that we can do. And we can still enjoy seeing our family, but, but, but use a little common sense on that. And I think if you do that, it'll go a long way. So everyone have a great Thanksgiving, and I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
Move to go into executive session for approval of minutes